Well, it's a moist mood.
Joy.
I know, everyone's in that festive summer break mood. I thought I might ask our new assistant superintendent of business services students to lead us in the pledge ladies' way. So welcome to our board meeting.
Please place your hand over your heart, join in, salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and equal with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to announce at this point that our board meetings are audios tapes and videotapes and maybe streamed to the Internet. And as our report out of closed session, in closed session, the board voted 5-0 to approve final settlement compromise and release agreement between the Fullerton School District and the parents of student ID number 790330. The district agrees to reimburse to the parents an amount of $2,500 in satisfaction for all reasonable attorney's fees and costs in OAH case number 2010120918 and OAH case number 2011050376 upon presentation of documentation as identified in paragraph three and four of this agreement. Payee on the check will be Adams and Associates, APLC, Client Trust Account. Additionally, the district agrees to an amount of $750 to reimburse to the parents in satisfaction of obtained previously educational services cost upon presentation of documentation as identified in paragraphs three and four of this agreement. Payee on check will be to the parents. In addition, in closed session, the board voted 5-0 to approve final settlement compromise and release agreement between the Fullerton School District and the parents of student ID number 772084. The district agrees to reimburse to the parents an amount not to exceed $2,500 in satisfaction of all reasonable attorney's fees and costs in OAH case number 2011010214 and 2011040292 upon representation of a document as identified in paragraphs three and four of this agreement. Payee on the check will be Adams and Associates, APLC, Client Trust Account. Thirdly, the board ratified 3-2, a mediated settlement agreement between the Fullerton School District and the Fullerton Elementary Teachers Association and its member employee ID number 1910 in the amount of $1,677. And that is the end of our report out of closed session. Next, I do have some public comments, so I acknowledge those, but they're in regards to an item two F, so we'll wait until that item comes before us. And we will then move on to the information from the board of trustees, our superintendent's report, sorry, just a line. So, are we there? Are we in the right place?
We're in the right place.
Okay.
Yes, where are we going? Just two things. First of all, welcome Susan, as a member of Executive Cabinet, please, if you're here.
Thank you, Captain.
And we're looking forward to working together throughout the year, so we're glad you're here.
I'm excited.
He'll get you active when he's working, you can meet him here soon. The other thing, as I wanted to say, is the only other point I have is that I did get a chance to visit our special ed summer school program. It's the only program that we do during the year, it's what they call the extended year program. And I was pleasantly pleased with what I saw. We've got, I think that the teachers, in some ways, a lot of ways, demand should get some kind of commendation or medal. And those students, they're from the very severe to the mild and moderate need, but those teachers really do an excellent job. I saw students engaged, I saw students working independently and yet they were engaged, and I'm just really pleased with the work and like to commend Laura Rydell, Special Department General under Ed Services, and Sharon Dyer, who was the, I guess, the principal on assignment during that time, did an outstanding job. I think they've done about 23 or 24 classes, and I was just, just so pleased to see how they were engaged. I understand also that we're using this as an opportunity to train our instructional aides, so not only are they getting training during the regular year, but we're using the special ed setting in the summer school for our teachers to work with their aides in order to help them become better compared to meet the needs of kids during their regular school year. So, an excellent program, a lot of good work being done, and our kids are really fortunate to have such highly dedicated teachers, and the education they give them is just fantastic. So I want just to make note of that. Often times we forget about, once school's out, we think, no kids went to school, but in this, in this sense, we have, the kids with the most needs are special ed cases kids, they're going to extend a year, and they really get into great education. That's my report.
Okay, thank you. Board of Trustees, go down here with trustee Meyer.
And I also would like to welcome Susan, she's going to be my seat buddy, so this will be fun, and Stephen Miller, working with you, great, welcome aboard. I have now come here to go to the Sister City fundraiser for our junior ambassadors, and we're sending 12, most of them from our junior high, to Korea, and they're leaving on Monday, and they were really a dynamic group of kids, and we're really fortunate to have the opportunity for those kids to experience that, another culture, and we can go. One of our junior high school teachers is one of the chaperones, Kristen Montoya, so she will be going, and we look forward to hearing about their trip. And finally, we have one fundraiser yet, for the Fullerton Technology Foundation, that our, that event never ends, and I can't wait till it does end this month, but I do have flyers, if anybody's interested in doing a cellar dinner on August 18th, and that benefits the Fullerton Technology Foundation. 10 tickets left, but I have to get rid of them all.
Thank you, trustee Sugarin.
Thank you. Welcome. We hope you enjoy all of our meetings.
I will.
I think everybody loves to come. Where to start? Okay. Over the past month, we've had so many emails about things that are going on in our state regarding educational financing, and no matter how you look at it, it's political, how it's interpreted, what's going on, and the value of things. I don't usually like to take a strong stand on this stuff, but this has really gone beyond what's appropriate in my mind. But I'd like to start off with saying this, before I do anything, our teachers organization in the city of Fullerton has worked exceptionally well with our district, with a concern to make students first, and that my value. But let me go beyond that, because there's always that slippery slope that can affect our school district regardless of the intentions of the people who head our district. This year, the 2010 and 11 school year, the National, or the NEA, spent more than 19.5 million dollars to direct public education for our students throughout this country. That's an amazing quantity of money to protect what's best for teachers. So how did that affect California? On July 1, the governor signed a bill that I find very disturbing. The bill takes some very direct action to take the power away from local governments, meaning school boards, to effectively make decisions on everything we want for our school district. Now, there are different ways to look at this bill, and people may take issue with what I have to say, but telling school boards that they cannot eliminate programs or release teachers based on the financial projections that we value in our district is inappropriate. That is the power of school boards to set direction and make fiscal responsible decisions, and to ask us to wait until mid-year cuts to see if what we're doing is accurate is ridiculous. We need to take steps now to ensure that what goes on in our schools will be able to continue throughout the school year. Our district and our teachers, as I've already stated, have worked really well together, and I'm proud that we really didn't release teachers this year. That's not the issue. The issue is statewide, and every school board needs to take a broad vision of what's best for our kids and our schools. In the governor's comments, he said he was pleased that the unions have, that school boards, if we do not receive the money in mid-year cuts that we anticipate, that he anticipates we will get, we can cut seven teaching days from our school year. That is not best for kids. This is a governor and legislators who've been elected who say, we're going to improve the education in the state of California and do what's best for students. To not put them first and to say, okay, these powers are going to be limited on school boards, and you will move forward, and now you might take seven days away from teaching, I find ineffective. That's my comment.
Thank you. And then trustee Burn.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, because it's been kind of quiet, but I just wanted to commend along on our explaining that so well, because I do believe that the state is taking away control from, you know, local school boards don't have that much authority up here, there's only, you know, we can make lemonade out of lemons, but you're taking one of things that we can do and taking it away and tying our hands, so I do agree with that. That's my, that's my comment.
I didn't have a report either, but kudos to trustee Sugarin for pointing the finger appropriately at the National Education Association and the millions and millions of dollars that they spend that I believe is in the worst interest of taxpayers and in the worst interest of students for their selfish betterment. The only part I would disagree with is I don't, I don't know that our local union has been any better with respect to supporting only themselves, only the kids versus themselves, but I applaud your courage in saying so.
I wanted to go a little more global in my comments, but I had the opportunity over the past weekend to attend the National Governors Association meeting. I hung out with 35 of our governors from across the nation, with, along with five from foreign territories that were there, and I would like to report back that education is a topic on their agendas. It's though beyond us, and it's at the higher education level that their biggest focus is, the governors are looking at how our students, our children, our future will be prepared to face a global future, because they're quickly acknowledging that without an educated students coming back into the workforce, jobs will not be created, and a lot of the conversation was focused on that. And some of the surprising comments are, you know, how states are addressing students that are not college-ready and taking remedial classes when they hit college, they talked about that. Obviously STEM is talked about continually. Job growth will come from our innovativeness, and our innovativeness comes from technology, comes from engineering, comes from the mass build. A huge push across the nation to evaluate what degrees colleges are offering, and obviously with the cost of attending college going up, there's a huge push to be evaluating where there's a fluff degree with no future for that child, and where there are degrees that are going to generate a job. Great stories out of the president of MIT spoke and discussed their programs where their kids, with their extensive research that they do, they're mentored by alumni in entrepreneurial spirit, and how to create a company, because creating a company creates a workforce and an opportunity. So it was, it was exciting. The things they said that are important for us to think globally are things that we've mentioned briefly at our own board table. Sister city relationships were one. They were pushing for the fact that the more our kids understand that the world is beyond the borders of their city, the better that child will be to prepare, and I think our community here is, you know, a little on the cutting edge in that regard. Technology came up continually, from the standpoint of, wait, we know about computers today will not be the same probably next year. Some of the things that the MIT people talked about were mind-blowing, non-woven material used to repair a odor valve and things like that being developed at MIT. The other thing that they felt is that we should be offering more dual immersion language programs, but they said you can't just teach Spanish. They said, look at Chinese, look at Portuguese, because Brazil is one of our bigger competitors out there, not to mention Korea, German, French, I mean, any language that you offer, and they highlighted not just Spanish, you know, because that's the world that we're going to have our kids work in, and they don't even know what those jobs will be. It's going to be a much different world than what we envisioned, and it was very exciting. Like I said, I hate to say that to them, their focus is higher education, and the biggest motto they really were promoting is complete to compete, because way too many students, we are now 12th in the world with the number of students that start college and graduate. We used to be number one. We've slipped that much that we don't have our kids completing college once they get there even. So our governors have moved into this world of how, well, they're looking for jobs, I mean, they want a workforce, they want businesses to be in their states that are going to produce jobs, and it's going to come from, you know, basically a very innovative, forward-thinking individual that is going to develop a product and market it and sell it and package it up and all kinds of things. Oh, the best comment was from one, was not a governor, I can't, it's slipping my mind right now, that we need a world of tinkers, you know, you need, and we've gotten away from that in education. We don't tinker anymore. Back when we were-
They tinker on the computers.
Right, but they're not necessarily, they're not robots, they're not making robots, they're not, they're not asking the what-if questions. They are playing on the computer, but they're not tinkering with an item and thinking, what if I did this? What if I wanted a better gavel? What would be a better gavel? That's a tinkering, that's taking something and how can I make it better?
You don't get a chance to risk anything, and fail.
And that's where we have to begin to think in our world, in our state, in our schools, so this is a very, very exciting opportunity. Plus, obviously with my daughter who works for a governor, the downtimes are truly interesting because some of those people have really quirky personalities, and those staffers tell the best stories, and I'd have more fun just sitting and listening to them, so it's a very unique experience. So anyways, think outside the box, think about tinkering, ask the what-if questions, and work on those foreign languages, because the world is not what we envisioned, and it's being overtaken very quickly by those beyond our media goals. Yeah, it's very interesting. Nope, California does not come.
Biden does Texas.
No, he wasn't there. Yeah. Washington was.
What was he there?
The National Governors Association.
So wasn't part of your, 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 your?
No, and the comments made is that they are members, and they do work together bipartisan, they do create policy that they then take forth and use to advocate for a position, whether it's on higher education, which is one of, you know, their push is to get kids college-ready and then complete college, I mean, they want college completion.
So is Texas and California not members?
I don't know, I, they're on the list as being on committee, you know, I haven't pursued it, they've met for 180 years around the country, it was in Utah this year, but I just think it's wise to remember there's a lot of organizations out there that, that their goal is to provide inputs and information, resources to hold discussion, and then therefore go out and go back and look at ways that you can use that information to enhance your state, your school board, whatever it is. It's a resource to work together, and, you know, it's, it happens for school boards, it happens for governors, you know? So it was a very good experience, I loved it. So, yeah. Anyway.
But we have reality.
I know, I know, it was hard. It was getting hard, getting up to work, but I did it. Moving down the list then, any other information from PTA? I don't see anybody up there.
No.
About FPTA? CSEA?
That's hot.
100%, THESMA? Nope. Okay, then our district calendar, which will be obviously getting fuller and fuller the closer we get to the start of the school year, is posted on our website, and our next actual item is to approve the minutes from our June 28 meeting, which I believe have been correctly recorded with the correct votes and motions from all the items on the agenda from last month. Okay.
As best we can.
As best we can. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 28 meeting.
It's been moved to second.
It's been moved to second, any further discussion or corrections? All in favor, say aye. All aye. Can you oppose? Perfect. Okay, we have our consent agenda, which is items 1A through 1W. 1A does have some corrections on it, as we do have a few new people that have recently agreed to accept some jobs that have been offered within our district, and I would entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda, 1A through 1W.
I'd like to pull 1K.
1K, okay. Then we have, is there a motion to approve the agenda 1A through 1W with 1K pull? I so moved.
It's been moved.
With corrections, that is second.
And seconded, is there corrections you would like to make?
1A.
Oh, yeah, revised, a revised 1A, the revised 1A, okay. It's been moved to second to approve the consent agenda with 1K pull, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Perfect, it's by O. 1K then has to do with having the principal management retreat speaker, the Ruby from the movie, yes?
I would oppose spending, committing $2,000 for any motivational speaker in light of economic challenges that we're facing, the cuts that we've had to make. This is Ruby Riddiger of Notre Dame, Ruby the movie fame, I'm sure he's an excellent speaker, but it's just not, I could not encumber the taxpayers with $2,000 fee for a motivational speaker at this time, so I would encourage the board, either the super to pull it or the board to oppose it.
Okay. See, I asked questions about that one, and I would like to talk about just the whole theory and concept, and I asked how much the actual, this is part of the management retreat, and so I asked about what that management retreat encompassed and how much we're paying for the entire thing, and so I think the, maybe we can explain that.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to it. This is the one time at the beginning of the year that we meet with the entire management team. There are about 90 of us total, including the managers, we invite board members. This year, for the first time, we've invited the executive cap members from FIDA and CSEA, because one of the challenges we have as a district is to continue to motivate and inspire. In fact, the board has charged me as superintendent to continue to work on maintaining a positive morale and a positive spirit in the district, and it's, it's hard to do at times, especially when you see the budget cuts and the numbers of layoffs that we had over the years. So this is the one time that I've worked with all managers, I'm a part of that, that whole thing. If you look at what a typical conference would cost, and typically we send teachers and classified and managers to conferences all during the year, this workshop is, first of all, we are partnering with Hope University, so they are not charging us for the facilities. They are giving us the food for breakfast and lunch for both days at a relatively very cheap cost, and pretty much their cost, and a lot of the workshops and things are conducted by our own employees through technology services. We have a business partner, Schools First, who was presenting one of the workshops on positive attitude and just how we, we need to continue to keep the focus on who we're here for, and that's our kids, and the positive attitude that we maintain. The only expense other than the food is for this speaker. Ruby normally charges $15,000 to $20,000 to come to one of these things, and because of the fact that he, one of his, I guess, one of his students is taught by the parent of one of our, one of our employees, he has agreed to come down, he realizes that there are big issues with schools and budgets, and so basically the cost of $2,000 is all-inclusive. He is coming down on one day, he's going to fly down in the morning, he's going to rent a car, he's going to come here, he's going to fly back that evening, and that's all part of that $2,000 cost. When I break down the cost of what we do to send people to conferences, this conference basically costs $25 a day per person, that includes two meals. So for two days, that's $50, the costs we have, I believe, are less than $4,500. So basically for $25 a day, for an opportunity really, which is a once-a-year opportunity where we bring everybody together, along with the executive captains of our associations, the focus is going to be on communication, the focus is going to be, continue to be on how we work together, because that's how we've gotten to where we're at, working together and communicating, and continue to keep the focus of what we're all about, and that's on our students. So I would encourage the board, I'd like to see the board approve this because of the fact that it does fall in, in, along with our goals that we've adopted, and that to continue to maintain positive morale, continue to inspire, and continue to get ready for a new school year.
I want to make it clear that I support you having created the needed time to discuss the year, and the year's very busy. I had a big, um, retreat, I'm very pleased with the fact that it's been put together for an economical rate, but at the end of the day, we are asking Fullerton and California taxpayers to pay $2,000 to have a celebrity pump up the teachers for an hour or two, but the management team for an hour or two. And, and I find, I find paying a celebrity motivational speaker two grand in this environment to be absurd, and so before the board votes, I would encourage you to realize, you're not voting for the event, you're not voting for holding a workshop or against holding a workshop, you're voting as to whether or not to spend $2,000 for an hour or two long celebrity motivational speaker. And, and if you believe that, that our staff is sufficiently unmotivated, or, or that an hour or two from a celebrity is going to substantively change their level of motivation, then I guess it would make sense to vote for it, but I think that, and I, I've been to a number of motivational speakers, some were entertaining, some were fun, I bet most of the people that work for our organization are sufficiently professional and motivated by teaching kids that this would amount to nothing more than an hour or two of entertainment at a rate of $2,000. So I would really encourage you to not vote and spend two grand on motivational speaker.
I think the dollars that we're spending is a, is a good investment by the taxpayers supporting, in that we are charged with the responsibility of working with kids and working with our students to motivate them to want to come to school, to motivate them to learn. And I think anything we do to bring staff together and continue to look at what the reason we're about, I think is money well spent. And again, $25 a day for a workshop and a conference, including two meals, I think is a little to ask, a little, little mountain to ask for, especially as we begin a new school year.
So it would be $12 or $13 a day if it weren't for the speaker?
So that it would be twelve or thirteen dollars a day if it weren't for the speaker?
Could be. Let me, one other thing for the board though, is I do work to get sponsorships and I am working with several different business partnerships to help us reimburse a part of the cost, if not all of the cost. I'm still working on that. Typically they'll do things in the fall and so I work with places like Schools First and stuff who has been very kind and supporting us. So, I am planning to try and reimburse or at least get some of the dollars back, not all.
But, and that's.
And I don't have it, you have it right this second.
No, but I am working on that.
And Chris, I think your point is well taken with the money and I think we need to, if we go ahead and do this, then we need to encourage management not to go on excess conferences which they're not doing anymore. So here they get one shot, everybody all at once and instead of going out monthly or a couple of times a year. I always remember going to the beginning of the year when the teachers used to have it and it was a real pump up. It pumped you up, it got you ready for it and even though $2,000 seemed like a lot, it really got the year started and it brought everybody together. Just the motivation, it didn't really matter who it was, it was just that gathering of people and camaraderie and pulling, pulling the ranks together.
It was a couple of years ago.
We did it last year, you spent money last year to get a motivational speaker.
A couple of years ago, we did the whole thing.
For the teachers.
Yeah, for keeping it free. And that one gentleman, they came to us and people absolutely looked, I mean, and I think that was set the year off, people stopped, they had time to think, it rejuvenated them. I do see the benefit in having someone come out from outside and be able to do this and it's not the best time to do this, absolutely, but.
You know what? We, I'm glad you raised the question, Chris, because it's important not only to raise the question, but to think about it clearly. It's important for large businesses such as this school district to be on the same page, to have a focus and sometimes to be refocused. This gentleman obviously is going to help refocus some people. Now, some people don't get a lot out from hearing a motivational speaker. And some people, it pushes a button deep inside their core that really ignites some new energies and new vision, a different path of thinking. And so, well, person A, they get zero out of this, person B, they get $2,000 out of what they just gave themselves for going back to their schools and their departments and their colleagues and their peers and saying, wow, I never thought of it that way. One way or the other, it's our responsibility to focus our people to be as motivated for all student learning as possible. And this gentleman sounds like probably great. I'm, I'm thinking for $2,000, it's a great buy for a district that's looking to save another dollar, we still have to look and consider. I want to convince and minch $50 a person for two days, that's pretty amazing for four meals and a speaker. And I see we've already contacted Schools First to provide a free speaker for us, so I'm excited to think that we're going to have the highest level of conference for our people to start the year off and yet keep it within strong budget constraints. So, I would like to support you on your vision to give that chance to move our entire district to the place we want to move it and pumping it up, that is something we've asked you to do. We focus lots every year, whether it's your evaluation or our principal evaluations on people putting in that extra push to do for all of our students and this sounds like a way to get that push, I believe.
Okay. At this point, I entertain a motion to approve item 1K contract with Ruby International. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved as second to approve this contract. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
That carries for one. And then, Dr. Hovey, would you like to announce some of the things that we revised on number 1A? It's pretty exciting.
My pleasure to announce, we have two new assistant principals and one new bilingual school psychologist at 40%. New assistant principal at Richmond School, Yolanda Castillo. She has her bachelor's of arts in child development from Cal State University of Los Angeles. She holds an MA in educational administration from Cal State, Los Angeles, subject credential and administrative services credential. Previous experiences include employment with the Montebello Unified Schools as a bilingual program facilitator and a state and federal projects director. She has worked with Anaheim City Schools as an assistant principal and a principal and recently worked in the Montebello Unified Schools as an elementary administrator. During the time where she wasn't the principal, she did take time and she was working as a consultant for ed consulting services. Probably have many of the schools know her and that she's worked with us to put together a SOAR program, a Saturday School program, and has been very, very successful in recovering lots of dollars that were lost due to students' absences. So she, she has been very, she's also very familiar with our district and that she has worked with our district for the last few years. So, Yolanda Castillo, new assistant principal at Richmond. And new assistant principal Maria Michel. She has a bachelor's of arts in communication, she has a minor in Spanish from Cal State, Fort. She has her MA in education from Claremont Graduate School, she's been a subject teaching credential and she has her own administrative services certificate. She has, has been employed with the SUSE Unified Schools since 2003. Previous experiences includes various levels of elementary teaching. She has worked in adult education, working with English language learner adults, EL program evaluator, she's been star coordinator, leadership team member, school site council member and microeducation coordinator. So we're really pleased to get two bilingual Spanish highly qualified, absolutely very talented, qualified people to join our administrative management team. And Maria again will be at Orange Door and Yolanda will be at Richmond. Lastly, 40% school psychologist, bilingual and Spanish, Patricia Sosa. She earned her BA in communicative disorders at Cal State University of Long Beach and earned a master's of science at Cal State University of Los Angeles. Currently serves as a school psychologist consultant with El Rancho Unified School District. Previously has also worked in Ballarat Park and has been a school psychologist intern with the El Rancho Unified School District and a speech and language pathologist with Montebello Unified School District. So you can see, we're getting some very highly qualified people to come join our ranks and we're really pleased to, that the board has approved it, it will be employed with the school.
I do have a question, I sent it to Mark earlier, I didn't realize he's away. We hired Margaret Dan as a substitute teacher on July 7th and then we also hired her for a special day starting August 24th. I don't understand why we hire a substitute teacher to be a special day at a MoSA when we don't need really.
I think we need to put her on the substitute teacher list so that she is, she is approved as a substitute teacher.
But then we're hiring.
But it was effective, effectively, July, July the 7th, right?
Substitute, substitute.
But she's also on the list.
For summer school, we're running a summer school special.
Yeah, and our summer school program runs out through the end of this week, so probably what we've done to approve her as a substitute teacher to work in our, to work as a substitute with our summer, access our extended year school program, you know, fall summer school.
Right. Okay, so that's why she's down twice.
Yes, and then she'll be with us for the new 10-11, for the new 11-12 school year, working in SDC.
Thank you.
Okay, that completes discussions on voting on the consent agenda. Now move to action items and the very first one is to adopt the resolution 111205 authorizing and providing for the levy of special taxes within this community facilities district. And I see Susan Newton came up there, back from vacation all twenty-four hours and you already got something on the agenda?
Can I ask, just, A and B are the same thing for two different special districts, would it be okay with the board to combine those?
Two A and two B are the same.
They're the same, they're different.
Yeah.
Two different districts.
Right. Do they have?
They have two, they have the resolution numbers.
Both resolution numbers have to be read.
Right. So you can move to approval, 2A and 2B, I don't know, Susan, you're grabbing your microphone, you wanted to say something about this?
If you want me to, I'm just getting ready.
I did have a question and it was, I think, sure, it's a silly question. We have some special taxes, some, some people were not levying a tax, some parcels were not levying a tax, is that because they're at a certain age and you can, you don't levy those people taxes or, I should have asked you this ahead of time, I.
In these community facilities districts, all the parcels are, all the parcels should be levied a tax, the ones that say zero in here, those are for parcels that have, that are like public sidewalk.
Well, it says number of parcels, number of parcels 110 for this one and number of parcels taxed 91, so there are.
The difference is the parcels that are not being taxed, which are sidewalks and that are.
That's correct.
And like taxes sidewalks.
Can I?
Not according to this one, no.
It's probably where the Montessori.
Well, you are, it's a, the like taxes.
It's probably the Montessori school.
No, they would be paying a tax, they would be paying on it.
The Marshall. So it could be this one too? This one. Yeah, those parcels that.
Well, they all have parcel numbers.
I know, but that's how the, that's how the county reports the land divided, hubs divided. What I. Okay.
I'm still waiting.
Thank you.
They're assessed and then what you want. Okay, so we have 2A and 2B, which have to do with our two community facilities districts, we have two resolutions. It's been moved that we consider adapting both or voting for both at the same time. I would entertain a motion.
I said move.
To both resolutions be approved. 111205 is one, right? Or am I wrong?
Five and six.
Five and six. It's been moved as second, any further discussion?
Now, now these are the same taxes that they agreed on the local office.
Yes. Yes. We do this each year.
Yeah, for how many more years?
Fifteen or eighteen or something like that.
Yeah, I think it's longer than that. Yeah. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries, 5O. The next resolution has to do with authorizing signers for business services and add new people to our sending accounts. I entertain a motion to approve resolution 111207, aye so moved? It's been moved, is there a second?
Certainly.
It's been moved as second, any more discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That one carries, 5O. 2D, oh, whoa, it's the same.
They choose three of them.
Yeah.
Can we combine 2D and 2E?
It's been moved that we consider combining resolution 111208 and 111209 together.
I said move.
Moving, is there a second? Moved as second that we approve these, both these resolutions to add to who will be able to sign on our accounts. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries, 5O. 2F, I do have two request to speak slips and so we'll go ahead and call forward Barry Ross. Talk to him online.
Good evening, board members, I'm Superintendent Hovey, I'm staff. I'm Barry Ross and I'm here representing the board of the Fullerton Collaborative. On behalf of the collaborative, we want to thank the district for the partnership that we've had over the past six years, which has benefited thousands of students and their families. The Fullerton Collaborative was started by the district as a requirement for the Fullerton School District helping start grant. When the grant expired in 2005, we have continued to work together to support the needs of the most vulnerable students and their families. We serve as a required collaborative for the district's after-school program and we provide support for the district's homeless, homeless, at-risk student services and for parent programs. We're pleased to continue this partnership during the next year by providing a grant to the district that will also support non-academic services that impact the ability of students to succeed. Our innovative public-private partnership leverages unlimited resources of all of our member organizations and the district to meet the needs of the district's students. Thank you for your support.
And our other speaker, Thomas Nixon.
Don't worry, I don't feel very long.
This is a chance for you.
Do I? You're so sorry.
There's no Marko at your start.
Well, thanks so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Tommy Nixon, I'm the board of the Fullerton Collaborative, I'm also the executive director of a nonprofit organization here in Fullerton called Solidarity and we work, we do community development in a number of low-income neighborhoods here in Fullerton and one of the things that's unique about us is that we also live and a lot of my staff and I live in these neighborhoods that we work in. And last year, in about April, some of our neighbors came to us and said, listen, they cut summer school, we know you have some programs, but we want, we need more programs to keep our kids off the street and busy and to keep that education going. And so they said, can you help us run our own program, which we want that, right? We want community empowerment. And so that conversation led to what we now know as SOFL, which stands for Summer of Love Fullerton. And out of this conversation with these neighbors, what happened is we started talking to, so yeah, started talking to Pam and the collaborative and our partners. And what happened was that we came out with nine different programs for a seven-week period last year and served over 500 kids and we had 175 volunteers come out for the summer. And we're doing it again this year, we're around the same numbers, but this year, because working with Dr. Hovey and, and the school district, we were able to get into the schools. And so now we have a lot more of the neighborhoods coming out. At Maple Elementary School, we have seventy children that are coming regularly for the six weeks, we're doing it six weeks this year. Richmond, we have 160, fully staffed with volunteers and we have a whole leadership structure of volunteers and so it's been an amazing thing to watch. We also were able to get food services this year so that the community could get food and that the kids could be fed after their programs. And so, we've just been lucky to, to one, work with the Fullerton Collaborative and the way that your partnership with the Fullerton School District has been, has been such an impact on our communities. And these are people that I love, I live, I'm in the community, I care about it and so to be able to have the connection with the school district that we would never have about, this partnership between the Fullerton Collaborative and the school district. So, I'm really just here to say thank you so much, thank you, Dr. Hovey, for just entertaining this idea and meeting with me and working through all the details, it was a lot of, a lot of details and, but we did it and it's going great and the kids are loving it, the parents are loving it and the volunteers are, they're in love with this, these schools now. So we look, that we're going to continue during the fall, so we're excited about that. So thank you so much.
Thank you, it's very exciting to hear that that's going so well. I took notes on something so much that I was going to try and. Anyway, the items 2F has to do with partnering with the Fullerton Collaborative and accepting this restricted project grant, which will allow the Fullerton School District to offer resources and provide opportunities to meet the needs of the families and our students. So, I entertain a motion to accept this grant for the 2011-2012 school year. Aye so moved? It's been moved, is there a second?
A second.
Moved as second, is there any further discussion?
I'd like to make a few comments. A year ago, I sat in the audience, not as a board member, but as an audience member and my campaign promise was to do what's best for kids, best for schools, fiscally sound and I didn't really feel the MOU last year was fiscally sound. I probably would not have voted for it last year, but I have to commend the district for reorganizing it and putting the grant money so it doesn't flow through the school district like it was prior. I took on, took on the task of going to every collaborative meeting this year, so I would learn because I really didn't know what they did and now I have a better feeling for what they did and. And now I have a better feeling for what they did, and in light of Marilyn White leaving, and you have a new person on board with the Director of Administrative Services, Child Welfare, and Attendance, I think the, the marriage of the collaborative and that department is going to be amazing. And I think it's something that we see a real need and a growing need in this community. I fully support what changes you've made, and you're to be commended for buying into that.
Thanks.
And I'd say that it's not, it wasn't just my idea. I don't take credit for the idea, I see in talking with several board members and talking with Barry Ross and a few in the community. This came about as a result of a collective discussion of how can we make this work? We wrote the best way to go. So as, as a result of discussion with some of our board members, and you know, we're discussing with community members, and how can we continue to best meet the needs of our students? So we're seeing more homeless, we're seeing more struggling families. The bottom line is how can we put our heads together in order for us to be able to meet the needs of our kids? So that when you can take care of some of those needs, it allows them to, it allows us to improve student learning, and that's what it's all about.
Tommy, I want to tell you, I personally know a student who was at the Richmond program this year. The program's having to, it was one more week? One more. Sorry. It's a wonderful, it was a wonderful program. Sadly, Richmond and Maple are not the only schools in our district that need this help. And for that, I'm hoping that you'll be able to expand your efforts.
Well, one of the things that I can, if I could just chime in here, is that we wanted to start it this year with the two schools. Actually, we did one last year with one school, and we did, and we did with two schools. Our goal is to try to continue to work to expand it. But we wanted to grow the program to objects that we know will be successful. So your idea about expanding and, oh, have more conversations about what can we do to continue to expand it so we can impact more kids.
And that's wonderful. And we appreciate the collaboration with food services. That makes a huge difference for families. And as I've gone to schools this year, forget the schools in the southern part of our community. Many principals in the northern part of our community are telling horrific stories of families who, the breadwinner has had wonderful income, wonderful jobs, and in the downshift of this economy, they find themselves without using their homes, and perhaps even in a more difficult position because they are not attuned to or comfortable with the idea of helping for support. So this effort is more heartfelt than that one before. As our economy has grown, yes. So thank you all for working so hard.
Okay, any further discussion?
I was going to say that I was one of those naysayers last year up here that, that didn't feel the MOU was what, that the relationship in the past, I just felt that we were an employment officer. And I think that the MOU that we have this year, and have had this year, and the relationship that we've had with changes that we've made, have made it stronger and worked out the kinks that were there. I applaud the, I don't want to make this personal, but the people in the jobs that are doing it, and Dr. Hovey for overseeing it, just to make sure that everything that we, the concerns that were there have been worked out, and that the, the district is getting the services that we, that we need. And we are, the relationship is working, partnership is working out wonderful. So I commend you guys for, prior again, of everything that I have concerns about, because it makes me go forward even when I'm worried about it.
I'll just make the comment that this arrangement is so far superior, in my opinion, to the previous arrangement, that while I do still have some concerns about the arrangement, I, I know that there are some necessary, both necessary and excellent functions that are performed as a result of, of the position. And thanks to the collaborative for the grant to facilitate it. I'm not going to go, I'm not going to get into what my concerns are. I have a few areas of concern. I guess what I'm basically saying is I reserve the right to, to have a different opinion next year, but I'm going to support this and pay close attention to, to everything that comes out of it. And, um, those are my comments.
A little out-of-the-box thinking, and we've put together a great package. So hearing no further discussions, all in favor of approving this grant for the twenty-eleven, twelve school year? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That one carries five oh. Okay. Now, moving on to three A, which is a, oh, the collaborative can't leave. We just have to do the health and wellness.
He's got a three week. He's at home.
Yeah, I have a three week.
We promised to have a last half an hour. Okay, let's take that.
We have a presentation to, you know.
These are part of their list.
Yeah, they do your job.
Yeah.
They don't, one more job.
Let's, let's change it, go ahead. Lead us through a presentation on our board policy, which has been well-known.
He has a three week old, and he has a free ticket to leave.
Okay, well, as Lynn, as Lynn said earlier, the mantra, the new mantra is complete to compete. And in order to be able to complete to compete and to have that time to tinker around, you need to first of all have good, sound, healthy body.
What did you say?
Good, sound, healthy body.
Oh.
Is that okay?
I wasn't prepared with that last word.
But it was fair.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought, yeah. Definitely.
We have had several pieces of legislation recently that have modified the expectations in our state for wellness education in school districts. And we have brought this board policy back revised to reflect those changes and to more clearly define the expectations that our state and our county holds for our students and their education for wellness. I'd like to have Becky and, Becky Dorito and Amanda Cologne come forth. Becky and Amanda have been, have actually developed a wonderful wellness advocacy council who have all contributed to the revision of this policy and more, a lot more. As you consider this policy and its revisions, we'd like to provide for you some background information about what we've been doing and where we've come over the past two to three years, and how we've arrived at the revisions of this policy. And so Becky and Amanda, take it away.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. It's our pleasure to share with you the planning that has taken place this last year that has led us to this evening, sharing the revised wellness policy with you. As Janet had shared, the board policy revision is being made because of the recent changes in legislation and the resulting mandated requirements. There are several more recent legal references that are involved at the very end of the, of the wellness policy, which have clarified expectations for health and wellness education. In addition to that, we'll be also sharing, as Janet had shared with you, just what has taken place this year in health and wellness in our district. We see that the health, the stacks are, you know, at your side there, and I want to share with you a little bit about what these stacks are. These items are available to our students. The mini parfaits are a special order item at elementary schools and are offered as entrees in a larger size at our junior high schools. The sun butter and jelly sandwiches that you have are a new product that's used primarily for field trips.
What are they?
Sun butter.
Sunflower.
Sunflower seeds. Sun butter. It's a replacement for the childhood favorite peanut butter and jelly sandwich, since nutrition services does not serve peanuts due to allergies. Isn't that fun? That's great, great. And you can enjoy it by washing it down with organic soy milk that you're not.
I thought you were first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He said that was delicious. Oh, great. But he drank yours. That's interesting.
Which is fortified with all the nutrients that are in house. Two years ago, two years ago, we gathered administrators, teachers, parents, and community members together to collaborate as they discussed the process of revising the district wellness policy. This evening, we have three of our wellness advocacy council members in our audience. Mr. Barry Ross from St. Jude Medical Center, Ms. Tracy Conkey from the California Dairy Council, and also Pam Keller of the Fullerton Collaborative.
See, they were never going to let us.
This collaboration has helped to strengthen and expand healthy student measures in nutrition, nutrition, health education, and physical education. Two health groups were formed from all of these members to effectively address students' health and wellness, each group making their unique contribution to the revising of the district wellness policy. One of the groups, that's a smaller group, is the Wellness Advocacy Council. That small group is made up of administrators, principals, the PTA council president, and community partners. They guide the decision-making regarding the health and wellness of Fullerton School District students. They also guide and monitor the district's alignment to the wellness policy. The next group is a larger group. It's a committee that includes teacher reps from each of the schools and the PTA parent reps, and they discuss ways to implement the wellness policy. They plan ways to build healthy school environments, and they share school wellness activities that are implemented at their school site. We are especially fortunate to have developed valuable partnerships over the years with the following organizations and companies. Their services truly enrich and enhance the healthy components of our district wellness policy. This year, in addition to working with those two health committees that I shared earlier with you, we also worked very closely with the PTA council in getting their input on the revised wellness policy, answering their questions of concerns.
As we worked together in the two communities and with the PTA this year, we began the process of revising the wellness policy. In the new wellness policy, you'll notice much of the language is strengthening, and it gives us a better tool and a more structured guidance on the topics of physical activity, nutrition education, school-wide wellness activities, and the nutrition guidelines. St. Jude Medical Center has also been a wonderful partner in the Neighborhood Wellness Program. Becky and I have been fortunate enough to work very closely with them to create several pilot programs focused on fresh fruits, vegetables, and milk consumption. St. Jude has also implemented the LEET program, which is a program to increase physical activity at the, at the school sites, and it's, it's the other half of the battle against childhood obesity besides good nutrition. You really need to increase your physical activity as well.
In two thousand and eight, Tracy Briers, the program manager of Healthy for Life, representing our other partner, St. Joseph's Health Systems, invited Richmond, Maple, Woodcrest, and Nicholas to participate in a fitness and wellness program based on their previous year's physical fitness scores. The PE for Me program, as listed there with the services they provide and their program goals, teaches the importance of lifelong physical activity and good nutrition. St. Jude Medical Center and St. Joseph's Health System provide the funding for this program. Last year, four schools were added to those other four schools to participate. This program enhances the existing PE program that is at their school sites. Nutrition presentations and cardiovascular sessions are presented to several classes at assemblies with additional teachers attending and supervising. This year's results are currently being tabulated, and countywide results from the one hundred and twenty schools that are participating in PE for Me will be available in August. Another event.
Will it come back in August for the report online?
Oh, yes, it will be in August, twenty-third.
Another event St. Jude Medical Center and St. Joseph Health Systems has been able to provide for Fullerton School District was a Radio Disney Assembly at Woodcrest Elementary. Radio Disney works directly with St. Joseph's in scheduling, and then St. Joseph works with the specific school sites, ensuring that the programs are spread out countywide and with principal approval. On September seventh, Radio Disney, Van, they arrived at Woodcrest School to provide a health and wellness assembly for students, staff, and parents. The Radio Disney team led students in games and fitness activities, reinforcing the message that healthy lifestyles equals healthy kids. Another one of our partners, the Dairy Council California, provides Fullerton with research-based nutrition curriculum for our K-3 teachers and students. This free education material is delivered to each classroom teacher and junior high school teacher. At Fullerton, our physical education component is met by using the Sparks PE program. Sparks is a research-based PE program that teachers have found to be an excellent instructional tool in teaching fitness skills to students K-4 six.
This year, staff development workshops in the area of physical fitness and nutrition awareness were provided for our K-six teachers on district Wednesdays and during a principal meeting. Here's a list of some of the titles of the staff development sessions, and you can see some of the pictures are of teachers participating in those, nutrition myths and promoting physical activity was a particular class. And those were all presented by our partners, Network for a Healthy California and Dairy Council of California.
In addition to the staff development opportunities that Becky just mentioned, over the course of the past three years, I've delivered presentations at each of the school sites just to make the staff aware of what educational presentations nutrition services can offer to the staff at meetings or in the classroom to support nutrition education. One of the items that I discussed and heavily promoted this year is our A to Z salad bar lunch. This is a great lunchtime event. It converts your regularly scheduled lunch into a twenty-six item buffet of fruits, vegetables, and proteins. There's no charge to the school, it's just regular lunch. We use student help works to serve the many additional items that we have that day. And it's just a really great opportunity for the kids to get exposed to new items like, like daikon, which Janet instructed me to have steak, because it's Japanese. And watercress and quince, and just things that they would not normally see on a daily basis. During the last few weeks of school, we partnered, I know the class, we partnered with the Dairy Council to set up Scott Milk photo booths. We were able to do this at three school sites, Laguna Pacific Drive and Commonwealth, where students and principals, as you can see, have their pictures taken promoting the consumption of milk. The milk the participants actually use is a blend of low-fat yogurt and one percent white milk, which makes it also perfect.
That's the.
Fullerton School District also became a part of NewPAC this year. NewPAC is a countywide collaborative focusing on nutrition and physical activity in Orange County. There are four sectors of NewPAC, and the school sector, which is the one we participate in, is also known as the Healthy Orange County or THO. This group has allowed FSD to contain additional resources, best practices, and valuable networking opportunities with individuals that are focused on nutrition and, and physical activity. As we look towards the future and the upcoming school year, we sought out some opportunities for funding in the areas of health and wellness. Recently, the Orange County Department of Ed approached Fullerton to be a part of the Network for Healthy California. The network will provide Fullerton School District with a grant in the range of eighty to a hundred thousand dollars that will be used to supply Title I schools with nutrition expertise and support through a variety of teaching materials and resources. While the funds can only be utilized to support the Title I schools, many of the resources, the information, the presentations will be able to be utilized at the non-Title I schools as well. And as you know, the Governor's Challenge is an opportunity for students and adults to be active for thirty to sixty minutes for at least three days a week. Last year, Kurt Cork, a district PE teacher and Richmond Elementary PE teacher, was selected as the silver medalist in the Governor's Spotlight Competition. He was awarded twenty-five hundred dollars for PE equipment for his school sites. This year, we had eleven schools participate and five schools qualified as finalists after they completed a three essay application. And also, two of the five PE teachers at those schools were recommended by their principals as spotlight teachers. as Spotlight Teachers of the Year, Stephanie Schrock from Maple and Tyler Morgan from Roland Hills. Winners will all be announced in September.
A legislative measure was introduced by Senator Lou Correa for planning the last full week in September as childhood obesity prevention and physical activity week. Both wellness committees have discussed and have planned a set of suggested activities and lessons for teachers to present during that week. We're at this time creating all the packets, getting them ready to disseminate to teachers when they return in August. Now, next steps. Once the revised wellness policy is approved by the Board of Trustees, we will communicate that revised policy with parents and students, utilizing our district Nutrition Services and Education Services website that we hope to have up and running by the middle of August. In addition, principals will discuss ways to effectively implement the policy. The Wellness and Safety Committee will exchange ideas about developing healthy school environments, and Ed Services Nutrition Services will provide a toolkit of resources to support the implementation of the policy. Thank you so much for providing us this opportunity to share just what has gone on in health and wellness over the last several years. Thank you.
Again, once again, we shine with some of our programs, but this has a policy behind it, so this is not an action item. This is our change to ask any questions about the policy, anything we think we might want to see good change, adjusted. Many pictures to it on the crosshairs. Anybody thoughts? Couple more weeks before we vote on it.
If they should have questions, do you want their questions to be directed to your office?
Yes. Yes. Anybody have any openings right now? I think that will lead us to the end of the agenda. I just wanted to comment that the next meeting is scheduled for August 23rd, and I will be out of town on that day, so.
Do we want to change anything?
I was making sure that there'd be a board.
I almost had a question, but I found it.
Would it be better to call it actually?
No, I'll leave that if I go.
That's up to someone else. I know there was concern that you potentially would have. Okay, then we'll take it.
So, Gordon, you would move on the 23rd?
Okay. And any requests for information or possible future agenda items?
I just wanted to, I should have brought this up. I got a phone call from somebody that invested their recollection that the entire marquee at Richmond was in Spanish, that everything that was on it was in Spanish, which started off with whatever was there, which additionally would be in English. I don't know, the person wasn't even 100% accurate, but somebody made a call about that. I assume it would be our policy to want whatever's up there also.
Typically, we do it in English and Spanish.
Right.
Any other items? I will gently.